Could we all rise for the flag salute?
Please rise for the flag salute.
Please rise for the flag salute, the flag's in the back of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could we all please remain standing for a moment of silence and reflection for those in harm's way and all of our armed service at home and abroad? Thank you. Statement of advance notice, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of date, time, and place of this meeting. In the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January 6th, 2025, such schedule and notice of meetings is posted at the municipal building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools was submitted to the Daily Record for publication on January 7th, 2025, and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January 8th, 2025. I direct that this announcement be entered into the minutes of this meeting. A roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
And with that, I'd just like to make an announcement, we're gonna move some of our agenda items. First, we'll go through our approval minutes and jump down to our reports and discussions. We have some presentations, and then we'll come back to the rest of the meeting. So would I have a motion to approve items 2.1 and 2.2? Mr. Orzillo, I'll put you on the spot.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2.1 and 2.2.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Nope, seeing none, we'll take a roll call, Ms. Ronan?
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
And with that, we are going to move down to our student liaison reports.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who do not know me by now, my name is Nora Rysk, and I am the 2024-2025 Board of Education Liaison.
And my name is Mia Homsani, and I am this year's Student Council Vice President.
We just wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate every student on an amazing school year and best luck to the class of 2025 as they finish their last weeks of high school. We know that there's a lot on the agenda for tonight, so we're gonna do our best to make this quick, and we're gonna start off with the highlights of the year.
Let's start with the music department, which truly hit all the right notes this year. Our chamber choir earned first place at Teen Arts and advanced to the state level, an accomplishment that reflects their dedication and their talent. Both the chamber and concert choirs performed at Rutgers University, where they were honored with distinction of outstanding performances. Huge congratulations to all the vocals and the directors for such an impressive season. Our final band concert on May 21st was a huge night for two seniors. Senior Riley Frieswick was awarded the prestigious John Philip Sousa Award, and Thomas German received the Leonard Bernstein Award, two high honors that recognize both musical excellence and leadership. In our drama department, they put on one of the most iconic shows of our school's history. This year's Spring Musical, Grease, was record-breaking. It is officially the highest grossing production in Mount Olive history. The cast, crew, and directors put in tireless work, and it paid off. Prom was also a huge success. The DJ was amazing, and everyone had such a great time. We want to give a shout-out to our class council officers and their advisors for working as hard as they did to give us such a great event. On June 3rd, we held our annual Renaissance Awards Ceremony to honor all the students who maintained honor roll this school year. It was a great opportunity to celebrate academic dedication.
To continue, this Thursday, our senior awards took place. Over $65,000 in scholarships were awarded to the class of 2025. The highly anticipated premiere of the lip dub took place last Friday. The whole school came together to decorate and showcase their school spirit. Just three days after the premiere, the views on the release have surpassed $22,000, and it continues to grow out. Huge shout-out to Mr. Promel, Mrs. Bowlin, and the TV production crew that made it all happen. And of course, last Friday, we had Marauder Fest, the Olive's favorite charity show. This year, we raised around $3,500. Half of the proceeds were donated to the 11th Hour Rescue Shelter, and the other half went to a local family struggling with cancer. Thank you to Mr. Ferry for working tirelessly to organize this event every year and making it a huge success. As we wrap up the school year, here's what's coming up. The end of the marking period assessments will start this Thursday and continue on to next week. This Friday, we also have our senior picnic being guided by our senior class. Graduation practice kicks off on June 17th, with graduation being held on June 18th, and our rain day will be June 19th, hopefully we won't have to use it though. Finally, I just wanted to give a little speech for my last report. I'm very thankful to have this opportunity to attend many meetings and be present while listening in order to report back to Student Council members with what I've learned. Being involved in many activities with the school and around the community has helped me and given me the chance to share all the amazing awards that students have earned and with our Mount Olive community. It has been an honor to represent the student body at these Board of Education meetings, and it has been a learning experience filled with all the lessons I'll take in life. As I leave the Mount Olive School District, I will go on to Rutgers University, where I'm double majoring in psychology and political science on a pre-law track. I would like to thank the present board members and the past board members for giving me the opportunity to be this year's Board of Education Liaison. I hope that the members of this community and all the students have an amazing summer. Thank you.
So as you know, for those who attend our meeting on a regular basis, Nora has been at every month's meeting delivering her address about the high school events with her passion and her ownness, so thank you so much. And certainly on the behalf of the Board of Education, this is just a little gift from us to thank you for all your dedication to her role as student liaison to the Board of Education. Give a round of applause.
So on behalf of the board, we actually have a resolution honoring our student representative for Nora Rysk for services on the Mount Olive Township Board of Education, whereas Nora Rysk has served with distinction on the Mount Olive Township Board of Education, and whereas through her leadership, the Nora Rysk Board of Education and Mount Olive Board of Education has gained fresh insights into student concerns, student priorities, and what is on the mind of our young people in the community. And whereas she has further contributed to the community by serving as a valuable spokesperson, sharing the student perspective at our board meetings, and whereas Nora's exemplary commitment to fellow students in the school district has promoted clear communication between the board, district administration, and the student body. And whereas Nora Rysk has maintained a professional decorum at board meetings, shown respect to the board members, and strive to learn the proper etiquette of serving on a school board. And whereas she has demonstrated a commitment to advancing the education of all students without neglecting their responsibility to strive for success in the classroom. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mount Olive Township Board of Education recognizes Nora Rysk's dedication and commitment to advancing educational opportunity and open communication between the board, district administrators, and the student body. And be it further resolved that the members of the Mount Olive Township Board of Education extends their sincere appreciation to Nora for her dedication and service on the Mount Olive Board of Education. And be it further resolved that the members of the Mount Olive Township Board of Education extend our best wishes to Nora and all of your future endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, we're gonna move on to our superintendent's report.
Now, I know all of you came just for this report. Now, as you can see from the agenda, we have a packed presentation list. We have a total of seven different groups that we're honoring. And what is so exciting is the fact that these groups that are being honored tonight is so diverse, right? We're gonna start off recognizing our phenomenal retirees who gave so much to our district. It's gonna be followed by a series of our high school groups that range from the field to the classroom beyond. So please take this time, sit back on your chair, enjoy the conversations we're gonna have in celebrating these wonderful staff and students. So at this time, I'm gonna be here talking about our retirees. So good evening, welcome to your inaugural Mount Olive Retiree Celebration. Tonight, I have the distinct honor of acknowledging the extraordinary service of our retirees, individuals who poured their hearts and soul into making our district a place of learning, growth, and endless possibility. The 20 retirees have accumulated a total of 368 years of service. From nurturing and supporting our students from the bus stop to the classroom, to ensuring behind-the-scenes daily operations run smoothly and efficiently, each of our retirees have played an invaluable role in building the vibrant and caring environment that defines our wonderful school district. Before introducing the honorees who joined us tonight, I would like to take this moment to acknowledge those who could not be with us. Wilson Ocampo, who served for four years as a custodian at Tins. Diane Vargo, who served as a paraprofessional. Dewanna Ren, a driver in our transportation department. Tim Gordon, who served in our garage and transportation. Tim McCupressy, who also served in maintenance. Chris Knitson, who served in technology. Jane German, a driver, Catherine Lines, aide in our transportation department. Linda Fuller, a driver in our transportation department. Antonia Zakowski, who served as a teacher in the middle school. Leslie Karasino, who was a paraprofessional for over 22 years at Tins. Suzanne Nielsen, who served as the assistant to the Assistant BA as well as the Board Secretary. And Lynn Jones, our Assistant BA who retired after 32 years. Now, if you've been with our district for a long time, you recognize that typically we present our retirees with a gift. And it was a great suggestion by Emo, who is the representative of our staff here in the district, to perhaps having the celebration at one shot, so that's why we're here today. So thank you for, Emo, for making that suggestion, because I truly believe it should be a public celebration at the district level. We are fortunate that we did have a number of our retirees who were able to join us. So at this time, what I'm gonna be doing is honoring those who are present with what I call your name. If you're here, if you wanna come up, and we're gonna provide you the gift if you're starting your retirement on this July 1st. So at this moment, if Mr. West in the room? So we've asked a number of people to kind of summarize what Mr. West means to the district, so I'm gonna be really paraphrasing this, because I can probably go on all night about the impact Mr. West has had on our district. We celebrate Mr. West's remarkable 18-year career as a dedicated mathematics educator whose passion, clarity, and encouragement inspired students to reach their full potential. Known for creating classrooms where curiosity and perseverance thrive, he also built relationships through his calm demeanor, humor, and genuine care. As he retires, we thank him for his exceptional service and lasting legacy, forever our wizard and Marauder Fest champion. Thank you. At this time, if I can invite Ms. Vicki, as she's known, as she's present? Come on in, Ms. Vicki. Ms. Vicki has been a dedicated nighttime custodian at Mount View since 2007. She's known for her warm and welcoming smile that greets both staff and students alike. Always willing to help, Ms. Vicki goes above and beyond to ensure her areas are spotless and well-cared-for. Her common friendly demeanor, strong work ethic, and true team spirit have made a lasting impact on our school and community. Ms. Vicki will be deeply missed, her kindness and dedication will not be forgotten. We wish her all the best in her next chapter, and sincerely for years of service. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to invite Antonette Romain up to the podium. Now, don't you cry. Antonette, what can I say? We had the pleasure of, Ms. Romain served, working in our district for over 20 years at the board offices, serving as a receptionist. Antonette is truly loved, she truly loved coming to work every single day. She would often say with a smile, "What am I gonna do at home?" Her joy came from connecting with others, whether it was meeting new people or spending time with the staff's children, whom she adored, including my own daughter. She still actually asks about her when she visits mom at work. Her warmth, humor, and love for all of us will be deeply missed, and we can't thank you for not only for your service to the district, but how much you care for us. We wish you the best. Do you check out her cane, ladies and gentlemen? That little bling on there? At this time, is Ms. Kennedy, Karen Kennedy, are you in the room? You couldn't tell, Ms. Kennedy is loved, right? You couldn't tell. Ms. Kennedy has been with Mount Olive for over 25 years and has taught literally every math class offered at mom's. She's been an intricate part of the math department's success and has been always going above and beyond to her colleagues and friends along the way. She will be greatly missed and wish her great success if she continues her rock star career. In the words of Ms. Kennedy, "So as this chapter of my life comes to an end, I suppose I need to figure out what I'm gonna do when I grow up." Happy retirement, Ms. Kennedy, thank you. Ms. Betty Ford, are you here tonight? Now... Ms. Ford retired a couple months ago, and you can only already see how refreshed and renewed she feels. Look how good she looks! Betty has been a school nurse for 25 years. She has spent her time taking care of her students and staff with utmost professionalism. Her hopes for the future is to spend the fourth quarter of her life discovering what matters most, what matters least, and to become the best version of herself. Thank you for all you have done to support her staff and students. You will be greatly missed, enjoy your wonderful retirement, and we love you. And our last retiree, who's hopefully here and present, Ms. Cindy McCleary, is she here? I see her. Ms. Cindy McCleary serves at a teacher at Sand Shore for over 25 years. As Cindy embarks on her next chapter, we reflect our gratitude for the incredible impact she's had on Sand Shore. Her warm smile, genuine positivity, and willingness to help in any situation, whether adapting to new programs or stepping into new roles, helping families, students, and colleagues alike. From her laughter-filled hallway walks to her calming presence during bus duty, Cindy brought kindness, connection, and a quiet strength that made everyone feel valued. Her legacy of compassion, dedication, and joy will live on, and she will be deeply missed. Happy retirement. Now, at this point, could everyone rise just to give all our retirees?
Yes.
So at this moment, we're going to transition into our high school-based activities recognition. So I'm going to invite Mr. Kevin Stansbury, Mr. Slim Shady himself.
So, tonight's programs are really going to be indicative of everything that we strive for over a very, very long time. And we want to provide our students with the best possible experiences, the well-roundedness, the complete high school experience. Simply put, we work hard, we work smart, and we play hard. And we pride ourselves in that hands-on, minds-on approach, curricular, extracurricular. And tonight, you're going to see some incredible examples of what we do. We can be a high-performing school academically, and also provide those incredible opportunities for extensions of the curriculum through the numerous student activities and interscholastic athletic programs that we provide. And certainly, we thank the Board of Education for all those wonderful opportunities that our students are involved in. And here's a prime example of that. And during the Liptdub, the Liptdub's fun, right? No question about it. School spirit, school pride, right? It's awesome. But it really reflects the broader way, right? Everything that we provide for our school system, for our students, is really summed up in that 10-minute video. So tonight is an extension of that celebration. So, the first program that I'd like to introduce, their advisors, Ms. Pam Melfetto, Ms. Melissa Grossstein, Travis Hubert, they're going to come up here and talk about our Best Buddies Program and Unified Sports. Big round of applause.
For those of you that don't know me, I am Bethany Francillo. I am one of the advisors for our Best Buddies Club at the high school. But I'd rather turn the microphone over to these are a couple of my cabinet members. So I'll let them take it away.
Okay, hi, I'm Anna.
And I'm Julia, and we are this year's cabinet for the Best Buddies Chapter. Do we switch the slide?
Yes, of course. There you go. Okay, so, our Best Buddy Clubs focus on creating one-to-one friendships between kids with and without intellectual and developmental disabilities at our high school, and also tries to create leadership opportunities.
Okay, so our four mission pillars are one-to-one friendships, integrated employment, leadership development, and inclusive living.
One of the main ones that we focus on is one-to-one friendships, where people will be paired with an individual buddy, and they will work on creating a close friendship. And they'll do that through school activities and hanging out inside and outside of school.
Okay, leadership development. Each year, our cabinet attends the Best Buddies Leadership Conference to collaborate with other schools. Recently, we have added a budget director to our cabinet, which is filled by one of our members.
Vishal, come here.
And to ensure all the voices in our club are being heard.
Major events. Beginning of the year, we had a Thanksgiving feast, holiday party, and Turkey Dash and Splash. While at the end of the year, we did a Easter egg hunt, the Friendship Walk, the Liptdub, and Best Buddies Ball.
So one of the main events was the Thanksgiving Feast, which is just an opportunity for everyone in our club to spend the whole day, like, hanging out, getting to know each other, and just a really fun way for us to celebrate our club.
Students volunteered to fundraise outside of school. One of our most successful fundraisers was the Friendship Walk at Seton Hall University. Money from the foundation goes directly towards our end-of-the-year ball, holiday parties, and creating new chapters around New Jersey.
Okay, and one of our biggest events is Best Buddies Ball, which is just a party we have after school towards the end of the year, with, like, music, dancing, food, and just a way to celebrate everything in our club.
All right, so to conclude, Best Buddies has taught us all important life lessons about inclusion and friendship. Our goal is to share these messages with our student body and our community, to help create an environment where everyone feels included.
My name is Zane, and I'm one of the co-presidents for Unified Club.
I'm Kelsey, I'm the treasurer of Unified Club.
Hi, I'm Megan, I'm the vice president.
Hi, my name is Chris Adam, and I'm VP.
I'm also the vice president of Best Buddies.
And hi, my name's Sean Lavery, and I'm also the co-president of Unified Club. So a little about MO Unified. Unified is a club for students both with and without intellectual disabilities. We come together for sports, games, as well as different events throughout the school. This club gives students the opportunity to take a hands-on leadership role in promoting inclusion in their own school environment. And the most important goal of Unified is spreading inclusion, especially with people both with and without intellectual disabilities.
So the three pillars of Unified are inclusive sports, which is bowling, soccer, basketball, and track. Our second is whole-school engagement, which is staff games, fans in the stands, and Spread the Word Inclusion Week. And our third is inclusive youth leadership.
At Mount Olive, we have multiple Unified Programs in the school, too. We have multiple art electives that include drama, video production, and art. We have Unified Sports, which is soccer, bowling, basketball, and track and field. We have leadership through the club, the cabinet, and unified captains. We have whole-school engagement, and we have leadership development through conferences.
All right, so on top of Unified Sports is also the main Unified Club, which everyone can be part of. So for this, we hold club fairs, we have monthly meetings, which everybody can attend. We have the San Shore Game Day. We have holiday craft, where everybody comes together after school to do, like, Christmas crafts or Halloween crafts. We have the High School Block Party, Safe Trick or Treat. And sure, we also held a bunch of fundraisers just to earn money for our club. We had the Special Olympics Turkey Dash and Splash and the Special Olympics Youth Summit. And more recently, we had the Easter Egg Hunt, the Special Olympics Walk on May 17th at Flanders Park, and we also had the High School Liptdub. And then our last event for the year is the End of Year Picnic.
And we just have some pictures for all you guys to see of our different sports. So we got Unified Soccer, Bowling, Unified Basketball, and Vika has some words to say about Track.
Um, I do the four, I do the four hundred. Four by four hundred, four hundred jacks, and I do the running long jump. This past week at, um, the Summer Games for the Special Olympics, I got, um, I got all And we also have a unified team, a unified unit team of the four hundred, I think, the two hundred and the one hundred.
And we also have a video to watch. Can I do that through here? He's got it.
Being unified means getting together as one no matter what, and being the one to bring change and foster inclusive around with anyone and everyone.
I love you by, I swear.
I love you by, because of the shared friendship that makes people both in the club and the school, and the new work opportunities that are very important.
I love you by, because the chapter in which we stand is, they have a right time and they provide us a path.
That's me, just being inclusive, being welcoming, making sure everyone knows it's a safe space, and everybody just create bonds with each other.
I think that this is where we need to have all of this work.
Yes, I think we're quite unified, because it's such a fun and meaningful way to bring people together. Everyone feels welcome, and it's all about including and supporting each other.
I'm quite special to me, because it brings people together, everyone's included, and we all get to share the same experiences no matter what it is. It's not even better.
You know, I, I love, I love, I'm happy, I'm happy, and.
Unified so much, not only for the connections that it needs, but also the community that it is a whole, meeting other partners and also athletes, is so rewarding, and I am forever grateful that I decided to join this club.
How about another round of applause for Best Buddies and Unified? And these are programs that we've been extremely proud of for decades, okay? I just want to make sure everyone understands that the Mount Olive Township School District has been inclusive before inclusive became, you know, a $50 SAT word, okay? Just for everyone's purpose. It's an incredible program, we have great teacher leadership, and of course, you saw the students that are a part of this special program. So congratulations, they've been recognized at the local, state, and national level through all the work that they've completed. So another round of applause. Another incredible program I want to introduce right now, we are members of the SEAL of Bilinguality. And to introduce our students who have earned this certification, I want to bring up our advisor of our World Language Honor Society, and oversees the entire SEAL of Bilinguality, big round of applause for Mrs. Veronica Cruz. A journey here as a supervisor of world language, Mr. Arturo Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Veronica Cruz, one of the Spanish teacher at Mount Olive High School, and also co-advisor of the World Language Honor Society. Before I begin, I want to congratulate my colleagues, retirees, that are leaving. It's a bittersweet moment, because I've been in the district for 20 years, no, 19 years, and we worked together for so many years, and not only that, my own children were part of your students, and you touched the life of my children and many children. So you will be missed, and you did a great job. So I really, you're really going to be missed. Now, for the SEAL of Bilinguality. So it's a true honor to stand before you to recognize a remarkable success by our juniors and seniors, earning of the SEAL of Bilinguality. One more year to celebrate languages. For me, knowing a second language has opened many doors and had played, has played a key role in my success, something I'm very proud of, and I am also going to do this for my own students also, so they can succeed in life. The SEAL of Bilinguality is awarded to students who have demonstrated proficiency in one or more languages other than English. It is a distinction that reflects global citizenship, cultural understanding, and academic excellence. In a world that is more connected than ever before, being bilingual, bilingual is a skill that opens doors in college, in the workforce, and in life. But most importantly, these accomplishments speak to the identity and resilience of our students. It takes years of effort learning grammar, vocabulary, and using the language to communicate with people from different backgrounds. Tonight, we especially want to acknowledge and congratulate our juniors and seniors who have earned this honor. This year, 58 students, 34 seniors, and 24 juniors are being recognized for this outstanding academic success. The languages that have demonstrated fluency this year are Bengali, Bosnian, Czech, Filipino, French, German, Hungarian, Italian, Merathi, Polish, Portuguese, Russian, Slovak, Spanish, Telugu, Turkish, and Urdu. I would like to applaud the students who decided to accept and take the rigors of this program. These students who will receive the SEAL of Bilinguality diploma had to take a rigorous test, which demonstrates they are able to speak, comprehend, read, and understand, and write in one or more languages other than English. Students, you have shown courage and commitment, and we are so proud of you. And I have no doubt that this step that you have taken will enhance your career in life. I'm very proud of you all, and I wish you the best in your future endeavors. To the parents and families, thank you for supporting your children in this journey. To our administrators, thank you for valuing language education and promoting programs that reflect the rich diversity of our students. And to all my fellow teachers, thank you for nurturing the love of language in your classrooms every single day. Seniors, as you go out into the world, remember this: voice matters in every language you speak. Being bilingual is not only a skill, but it's a bridge to understanding, a tool for leadership, and a gift you carry for life. Thank you. Now, I'm going to call the students who will receive their certificates, please come up when your name is called. Aslan Amador, Spanish. Blessin Anangue, French. Romaisar Salan, Urdu. Leonardo Avila, Spanish. Luisa Cordón, Spanish. Giann, Isabella Escobar, Spanish. Giannella Fano, Spanish. Nicolas Franz, Spanish. Laszlo Hexey, Hungarian. Mateo Gonzalez, Spanish. Mateo Gonzalez, Spanish. Maria Gonzalez, Spanish. Jacob Hamre, German. Isaac Hercules, Spanish. Tomas Honda, Portuguese. Valentina Hurtado, Spanish. Nisni Janbatis, French. Sheila Kujic, Bosnian. Christian Lavos, the Soviet, Russian. Mahela Masarina, Spanish. Meilin Monterrosa, Spanish. Kiara Ungaro, Spanish. Hayassin Ortega, Spanish. Darin Pujol Mendez, Spanish. Duranju Pujol Mendez, Spanish. Duranju Pujol Mendez, yeah. Maria Reyes, Spanish. Robin Reha, Czech. Jimena Rodriguez, Spanish. Haley Salamanca, Spanish. Aisha Sheikh, Urdu. Samantha Soto, Spanish. Lord Tomas, French. Teresa Zenko, Slovak. We're almost done, now the juniors. De Hexi Agnes, Hungarian. Stefania Guddello, Spanish. Elkim Arikan, Turkish. Genesa Baltasar, Filipino. Rafaela Begazo, Spanish. Felicidades. Serin Bildin, Turkish. Maria Jose Cardona, Spanish. Felicidades. Amaya de la Cruz, Spanish. Kitty Fernandez, Spanish. Martín Hidalgo, Spanish. Shridam Kodumaguya, Telugu. Victoria Maher, Spanish. Litsi Mateo, Spanish. Cassandra Messinas, Italian. Konrad Miluski, Polish. Victoria Muniz, Portuguese. Christopher Pintado, Spanish. Maria Clara Rocha, Portuguese. Emmanuel Sakisela, Spanish. Benjamin Schreck, Polish. Salometta Vares, Spanish. Kimberly Taboa, the Spanish. Soya Baya, Marathi. And last but not least, Salome Villa, Spanish. Congratulations to all of you, and have a wonderful night. Thank you.
How about another round of applause for Seal Biliteracy? That's amazing. And it's no secret that our township is becoming more and more diverse, and this is an example of that. So we're very proud of the work that our world language program has been doing to DEI, our international student organization, to really promote all the wonderful cultures and languages. Up next, I feel like singing right now, I really do, I feel like singing, but I will pass because the next introduction is someone, you know, someone that we've tracked for years now, almost 21 years, I think, and she's been the advisor of our drama club, Broadway nights, our spring musical, assistant with the fall, all these wonderful accolades that we've earned through our drama program. How about a big round of applause for Miss Jody Bosch? She might sing a little bit for you. A little journey. Oh, come on.
Over here, guys. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for acknowledging our drama club students tonight. Our season began back on August 30th and ended last night at our amazing drama club banquet. And we were able to, with our parents' club, give out eight scholarships, so we were really excited about that. We had an outstanding season this year, beginning with Broadway night and musical movies, and after that, we produced The Prom directed by Mr. Bosch, and then Grease. Yes, we can applaud him. And then in the spring, we had Grease, and then we just ended with our junior drama riders doing The Lion King. So those were our productions this year. Across five drama festivals and competitions, the club garnered 24 nominations and wins. So if you are one of the students who I name, if you would mind waving, or step forward, or do a little dance, or something like that, that'd be great. So back in April 7th and 8th, in the Bucks County Drama Festival, where we had a two-day festival, and we competed with The Prom and Grease. The first, we have winner of the Love Thy Neighbor Ensemble, that's the entire ensemble of The Prom. On day one, that was day two, on day one, we won Most Energetic Cast for the cast of Grease. We had two winners for something called the Fully Embodied Belt, and that was Dylan Kovach and Zoya Vedya for The Prom. Winner of Power of Storytelling Award for The Prom for Emmy Bosch. Winner of the Leader of the Pack Award for his role in Grease for Lincoln Vera. Winner of the Spotlight Solo Award is Sandy for Jadelyn Anderson in Grease. Winner of the Actor Beyond Your Years for her portrayal of Rizzo in Grease, Leila Blakey. And the winner of the Most Committed Ensemble Member for his role as Eugene in Grease, Riley Cahilly. On May 16th, members of the Thespian Society competed at the Morris County Teen Arts Festival, and we had three places there. Winner first place and state qualifiers for small group musical theater in their duet, Leila Blakey and Emmy Bosch. Winner second place, small group musical theater for Matthew Karosky. And a score of performance excellence for our large group musical theater for Hamilton, the Thespian Society members. On May 19th, we attended the Montclair Theater Night Foxy Awards. I don't know what's happening. For his nomination for Outstanding Overall Recreational Actor in a Musical for his role in The Prom, Lincoln Vera. Another nomination for Outstanding Actor in a Musical for his role in The Prom, Lincoln Vera. Nomination for Outstanding Production Directed by Mr. Bosch for The Prom. Nomination for Outstanding Ensemble in a Musical for the whole cast of The Prom. Nomination for Outstanding Student Lighting Designer for his work on The Prom, Brendan Harvey. A nomination for Outstanding Stage Manager for her role in The Prom, Riley Thomas. On June 2nd, we attended the Bergen Pack High School Musical Awards, and beating out an adult, had already beating out every adult, is our winner for Best Lighting Design, Brendan Harvey for Grease. We also were a winner for the Best Design of our Lobby by our Drama Riders Parent Booster Club for Grease. Then we have winner for Best Solo Performance for Broadway Night, Zoya Vedya. Nomination for Best Solo Performance for Broadway Night for Lincoln Vera. Nomination for Best Solo Performance for Broadway Night, Emmy Bosch. And on June 3rd, we attended the Paper Mill Playhouse Rising Star Awards, where we received an honorable mention for lighting design for Brendan Harvey for Grease. And we have a winner for Student Achievement in Lighting Design at Paper Mill for Brendan Harvey for Grease. So we really look forward to next season. We announced our shows last night, so you should look forward to Broadway night, Disney night, and our fall musical will be Mean Girls, and our spring musical will be Freaky Friday. Have a great summer, everybody. Thank you. Good job, guys.
Another round of applause for our incredible drama program, International Thespians Association. And really, it speaks to the strength of our entire music program through the middle school and the high school. It's absolutely amazing, and Rock and Roll Academy, our concert ensembles, our choir is all part of the success of our drama club. So a big round of applause for Mount Olive High School and Mount Olive Middle School's music programs. And Melanie McQueeney, how about a big round for her as supervisor of the entire performing arts program, K through 12? Big round of applause. So here's another example where Mount Olive Township School District's been a leader. You know, STEAM, STEM education's been big over the last decade. Yeah, we've had a robotics program for 28 years, all right? Let's just be mindful of that, 28 years. And to talk about their incredible season, Bill McGowan is one of the founders, Dean Bodmer, Matt Ote, and now we have this incredible individual gentleman who's running our robotics program, K through 12, right? First Lego League, FRC, all right, FTC. Big round of applause for Mr. Don Beery and his team with More 11 and More 193.
That's about a third of them. If we brought everybody, there's a problem. I want to thank you, obviously, Board of Education, and everybody in the audience for recognizing the Mount Olive Robotics Team. As Mr. Stansberry has pointed out, we are a K through 12 program. Tonight, before you, is the high school team who had a phenomenal year. I actually had to write it down. Started writing it down, and I realized that I kept writing for their accomplishments this year. So FRC More delivered a season of top-tier performance leadership. They kicked off the year by winning the Industrial Design Award and the district event here at Mount Olive. They were honored with the prestigious Impact Award at the Centennial Competition. They followed that up by winning the entirety of the Mid-Atlantic Championship, that is Delaware, Pennsylvania, and New Jersey. They also, at the district championship, received the Judges Award for their exceptional team story and impact. Their stellar season earned them a ticket to the First World Championship in Houston, Texas, where they advanced to the quarterfinals, placing them in the top 5% of the entire world out of 4,000 teams. Their performance this year dedicated their teamwork, vision, and engineering excellence. They were then, on their arrival home, were internationally recognized as a Global First Recognition School Team. This is one of 10 teams that was recognized across the world as an example for what other teams should strive to be. Most recently, they received a $56,000 grant to continue their education of K through 12 first programming, and the materials already started arriving. That's why there's pallets downstairs we have to put away on Wednesday. And the last but not least, of course, if the seniors would please step forward. These young individuals have carried this team for the last four years, ever since post-COVID era, and we always talk about this at the end of our year, but we also tout the fact in the last four years, we've had over $2 million in scholarships come out of More. So please give these ladies and gentlemen a big round of applause. So please give these ladies and gentlemen a big round of applause. And if you ever want to have a really good time, all you have to do is say three things really loud. M-O-R-T! There you go. Thank you very much.
In case anybody's keeping score at home, this is an American public high school in the state of New Jersey. Okay, I just want to be mindful of that, of all the wonderful programming that we provide here in Mount Olive. Next, and certainly not any priority on the list, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce our Director of Athletics, who oversees a, I don't know, a program of 29, almost 30 varsity sports. And to talk about some of the incredible accolades that have been earned by our student athletes, big round of applause, Colleen Soufle.
Good evening, everybody, and congratulations on all your incredibly special accomplishments this year. As we wrap up the school year, I'm incredibly proud to honor some of our spring championships teams, as well as our coaches who have been in the district 20-plus years. Now, we had a couple more, but they had babysitting and other board of ed locations that they needed to go to. In totality, we have 12 coaches who have 20-plus years of service. Today, we are going to be celebrating eight of them as their schedules allowed them to be here today. First thing I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about the enormity of Mount Olive Athletics. So every year, we do a little bit of State of the Union. This year, we incorporated a brand-new health roster program. That is an information system for injury rehab and prehab. And what was able to give us some really incredible information, which we are grateful for, is that our two athletic trainers this year diagnosed and went through protocol for 51 concussions, all successfully re-entering the game, which was amazing. Forty-six sprains, 53 strains, and 30 fractures. So the idea that sports at Mount Olive is competitive is no joke, okay? They're out there competing at the highest level and putting their bodies on the line on a daily basis. This year, we, home or away, we've competed in over 1,000 contests. That's a little over 100 a month, home and away. We have requested over 1,200 transportation shuttles or buses, right? So a thank you to Mrs. T. over in Transportation and her crew, because 1,200 buses means 1,200 bus drivers every day doing the work and putting the extra effort in. We hired over 1,152 officials. Thank you for that. So the program, the program at Mount Olive Athletics is large. I think Sean Lavery is here, and I'm glad that we still got him. I got information today that Sean Lavery was nominated All-American Academic. So congratulations to Sean Lavery. One of the other great things about Mount Olive High School that we did this year, we were going to bring all these students, athletes, to this recognition ceremony tonight, but there were too many of them. One of the greatest things about Mount Olive is the three-sport season. Okay, that means that we have athletes playing in the fall, playing in the winter, and continuing their sport experience in the spring. This year, we have over 100 three-season athletes in Mount Olive, which is amazing. I'd like to introduce our two championship spring teams this year. Coach O'Connor for flag football.
I just want to say thank you to the Board of Ed, and thank you to Dr. Banja for supporting this program. The girls' flag program is still fairly new. It's only in its fourth year of development right now, but in those four years, we've had a ton of success. We have several of our girls here today who stand up here to be recognized. We also have Coach Rebels, Coach Merle also here. Just again, I want to say thank you to the Board, Dr. Banja, and Ms. Soufle for supporting us. This past year, they actually had another tremendous year. It's our fourth year, as I mentioned, but it's their third year in a row, winning the conference. It's their second year in a row, winning the county tournament. They made the state playoffs for the third year in a row, and unfortunately, lost in the quarterfinals. But we're a young team, very exciting, and just want to say congratulations to all the girls for being able to come here and come out, and hopefully see you all come to some games and support us as we play in that stadium. We want to really pack that house, give us that home field advantage. So congratulations, girls, and thank you, coaches, and Ms. Soufle, and thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you. While they're receiving their certificates, at this point, would Coach Zach Fike please come up here to talk about the baseball team?
Thank you all for coming. My name is Zach Fike. I am actually the head JV coach. Our head coach, Pete Zokolow, was unable to make it here tonight, as his son, Peter, was accepted to play in the senior state All-Star game that's being held at Diamond Nation tonight. And after many, many years of being his son's coach, I think it is well-deserved that he finally gets a chance to sit in the stands as a dad and watch his son play. So... So Pete asked me to share just a few words about how our season went. The 2025 season was a memorable one for the squad, finishing with an impressive 19-9 overall record. The team dominated NJC Conference, NJC National Conference play, going 11-1 and capturing the conference championship. In postseason play, they finished a final four appearance in the Morris County Tournament, narrowly finishing, falling to Del Borton 3-2, and entered the NJSIA Group Four Section One Tournament as the number-three seed. And then also, there are a couple of players that were able to etch their names into their school record books after this season. The first one, I already mentioned his name, Peter Zokolow, set the new single-season record with 40 RBIs and 27 walks. As I mentioned, Peter's unable to be here tonight. Up next, we have Brayden Longo, a sophomore, who scored a school record of 41 runs and tied the single-season record mark with six home runs. Brayden was also unable to make it tonight. This next guy, though, he is here. Robert Hubbard reached a major career milestone, reaching his 100th strikeout on the mound. Congratulations, Robert. Pete's last remark here says, "It was a season defined by grit, teamwork, and historic individual performances, cementing 2025 as one of the most successful campaigns in program history, reaching the 20-win mark for only the third time in school history." Thank you very much.
Last part of our athletic presentation tonight is one that I am so grateful for and so proud of. One of the, one of the greatest things about being a coach is that you surround yourself with people who are like-minded and understand the sacrifices and the work. And truly, the reality in moving forward in our culture is that coaches get a lot of pushback, and they support each other. And if they were not as passionate and filled with ambition to be student-driven, then it would be really easy for people to be tapping out of the profession. But our coaches here, the ones that we're honoring tonight, have been steadfast in their 20-plus years. And I am so grateful to be a part of this journey with them. I would, you know, I learn a lot from them, and they learn a lot from each other, and I think that's what education, the world of education is about. So I'm really proud to announce a few of our coaches. First coach up, Mr. Lee Clowers. That was a big stretch. Had to get all the way up there. All right. Then we have Coach Sean Smythe. Jose Bilbo. Mr. and Mrs. Ben Fatty had to leave, but congratulations to them. Coach Jen Rebels. William Romano. Our last coach has accumulated 32 years coaching, and I spoke with her just the other day. I actually called her up Monday night to make sure that she was going to be here, because she's one of the most humble people that you will ever know. She's under the radar. She does her job quietly. She assumes no credit for anything that she has done. In the short time that I have been here, this name rings out as children coming through have the most incredible and most positive experience. It is with my great honor to introduce Karen LaValle. Thank you so much to our coaches, who have given up so much of their lives for the education, truly, in sports or in education, of our student athletes. Thank you to the community for supporting Mount Olive Athletics. We are proud to represent. We do the best we can every day. Thank you to the Board of Education for your unwavering support. And thank you, Dr. Banja. And thank you, Mr. Stansberry, for all that you have done as well. I think we're going to be a problem. I'd like to just introduce one last piece. We have two student athletes here. As we move our Unified Sports forward in such incredible fashion, I want to say thank you to Ms. Mafeto and Ms. Grosenstein. We have two incredible awards this year for two athletes, and I will let Ms. Grosenstein talk to them about that.
So I usually get inspired by quotes, and we just came off a long weekend, a really inspiring weekend, at the Summer Games for Special Olympics. The quote of the weekend was, "Special isn't what I am, it's what I do." This quote perfectly captures two students that we're about to recognize. It's not about who they are, it's about the effort they put in, the kindness they show, the challenges they take on, and the example they set for everyone around them. This year, these athletes are not just special, they stand apart, and it's about lifting others up, leading with their hearts, and giving your all in every moment. Our first award is for Unified Partner of the Year. This award honors a student whose commitment to Unified Sports has not only elevated their teams, but has left a lasting impression on our entire school community. Throughout the year, whether he's dribbling down the court, sprinting to the finish line, which he didn't make this year, or celebrating a goal on the soccer field, this Unified Partner has shown truly what it is to lead with his heart. He has been more than just an athlete, he's been a mentor, a motivator, and a friend to every teammate he's encountered. But his impact goes beyond the scoreboard. He consistently shows up with patience, kindness, and willingness to listen and learn. He treats every athlete with dignity and respect, and his presence creates a sense of belonging wherever he goes. His leadership, compassion, and unwavering belief is the power of inclusion. We are so proud of you, Zane Muchaba. And I know Ms. Mafeto wants to add a little bit to what I, to my little speech, which I feel like really needs to be celebrated. Go ahead, Ms. Mafeto.
I fell today, so bear with me, because I can't walk on these things. Yeah, do you have it on your phone? So Zane is not only Unified Partner of the Year. I've worked with Zane on Unified for the past four years, so I might get a little teary, because I've worked with him as I've seen him grow and mature and really embrace Unified and become part of the program and what it means. So Zane is a dedicated member of the Unified Club Unified Sports and throughout his four years at Mount Olive High School. He exemplifies the values of inclusion, the kindness, quiet leadership is something that I use to describe Zane. Zane consistently demonstrates what it means to be a Unified Partner. He uplifts others and fosters teamwork, and he always is leading by example quietly. We were at the Red Bulls Unified Team Tryouts over Christmas break, I believe, and Zane stood out not only to me, but to the other judges, for not only his athletic ability, but his remarkable selflessness. As others were out there showcasing their individual skills, Zane used his talents to ensure that every player was included. He stood out, and he bridged the gap between the more advanced players and those who faced challenges on the field. He knew that they weren't going to be part of the Red Bulls team, but he didn't leave them behind. He's truly inclusive, and he supports everyone. He's a role model for our school and community. He's an example of what it means to be a Unified Marauder. As we recognize him and his impact and dedication, he's also been selected to play on the Red Bulls New York Unified Team. He's invited to represent also, another huge honor, he's representing New Jersey and the Red Bulls in the 2025 MLS All-Star Experience. With this, he's going to be going as an ambassador for our school and our state and inclusion, and what it means to be a partner. So I'm so proud of him. These are wonderful experiences, but it's well-deserved, and he has been such a leader and such a dependable, empathetic partner and role model for all of us. I'm so proud of him, and I wish him the best of luck in everything that he does going forward, and have fun in being part and enjoy the experience of the Red Bulls and that MLS experience that you're going to be a part of. Represent us well. He always will, and he always does.
All right, so we're going to honor one other athlete. This student, again, is dedicated, perseverance. He has a heart of gold. He makes me laugh every day with his humor. When I first met Vishal, I was teaching him Algebra I. Come on up, Vishal. So my name is Grosenstein, and Vishal comes up to me the first week of school and says, "Ms. Grosenstein, can I please change your name?" And I said, "Absolutely. What are you going to change it to?" And he's like, "Grosenstein doesn't just, doesn't fit you." So every day, to So every day to this day, he welcomes me with Mrs. Gorjastine, every day. And this year on track, Vishal told Ms. Mafeto and I, "I am not doing the standing, I mean the running long jump, I am doing shot put. I'm a senior, it is my choice." So of course Vishal is like the second shot putter on the team, so I mean, he is just, he excels at everything he does, he's always happy, he makes us smile in the hallways every single day. Vishal, you're an absolute honor to watch, and you're going to be so successful in everything you do. So we are so proud of you.
I have just enjoyed Vishal and his spirit and his light that he brings to everything. He is just a friend to everybody, cheers to everyone, and he is an athlete who tries always his hardest, and the best part about it is he always says, like, "It was fun, it doesn't matter, it's fun." He makes it what it's really, truly about. It's about having fun and including everybody and doing your best, and he really embraces that spirit.
What do you call the board meeting? What would you call it?
Fun meeting.
He has such an optimism and a spirit that is contagious, and we will truly miss him, and he has definitely impacted all of us and everyone who he meets. Just to let you know that the Red Bull experience is something that Vishal also had taken part in last year in representing us, and he got to travel to, where did you go?
Colorado.
Colorado, and Zane is going to, going to Texas? That's for the other one, the MSL. Aren't you going to the, oh, for both of them? Okay. Texas, so congratulations, and both of you are well-deserved athlete and partner.
And we all, we all coach him in all the various sports.
I realize we've been going on for an hour and a half, but I just liked Ms. Soufey to come back once again. Please, so I know we honored Ms. Soufey earlier this year, but certainly we wanted to take another opportunity to recognize the hard work that goes into organizing and leading such a diverse group of athletic programming here in the district. And what's so key that people also need to recognize is while, you know, we looked at our high school sports, we have a phenomenal K-8 theater program that we partner with the township, and I can't thank enough for their partnership in order to ensure that we have the students ready to go into high school. And I just want to take this time to thank you, Ms. Soufey, for the hours of hours that goes into putting these programs together. So one last round of applause for Ms. Soufey. And that concludes the superintendent update.
You sure? Nothing else?
Yes, Ms. Norsey, it's up to you now.
How about a shout-out to the Real Slim Shady Mr. Stansberry for that great MO lift-up?
Can I just get my stuff? We'll go through the reports. Okay, we are going to power through, we're going to go on through our reports and then go back and go into confidential session. Okay, you ready for that? Do you want to go to close session first?
I'm just thinking, Madam President, we should maybe go to close session first.
And my computer was shut down. Well, it's good because my computer-
I mean, it's up to you guys, I just-
No, I agree, because my computer just shut. So with that, we're going to actually go to confidential session first and then come back for our reports. With that, I'll take a motion for confidential session.
So moved.
Second. Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I need to find my be it resolved statement here. Oh, yeah, be it resolved that the board meet in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege, pending litigation, and confidential pupre matters, matters or real estate matters. Be it further resolved that the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. We are in confidential session, folks.
And I will call us back into session. Can we take a roll call, please? Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Dr. Giudano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
Okay, and before we go on to the reports and discussions, I just wanted to add two updates on agenda items. 10.6 will be updated to state that the dates of hire will be from June 3rd to July 21st. June third to July twenty first, not to exceed nineteen thousand five hundred with an update and review on July twenty first to the board. And eight point three, the dollar amount is to be updated to say one hundred and fifty dollars. Anything else, Mrs. Schonin? That is it? That is it. Then we will move on to our reports and discussions. And we are back down to five point three with, Dr. Banjia, do we have anything to add to our superintendent report? Do you think we had?
I'm good.
All right, we're going to move on to five point three with Personnel Committee, Ms. Fenton.
Hi, thanks. So we just met today, so we don't have a report for today, but I did not give a report, nor is it written yet in our agenda from the Monday, May twelfth. So I'm just going to brief you on what we went over, and a full report will be coming shortly. So we talked about non-tenured staff feedback, math supervisor for six through twelve, ELA coach for elementary, James Carify contract, the MOTSD job fair, that was May fifteenth, and we were discussing communication positions for next year, like for Facebook communications. And that's about it.
Any questions from the board? Okay.
That was an excellent update.
And with that, we are moved to five point four, Curriculum and Instruction Committee Report, Ms. Figuera.
We met on May twenty ninth in Dr. Banjia's office. Committee members present were Dr. Banjia, Mrs. McDermott, Mrs. O'Neil, Mrs. Fenton, and myself. Mrs. McDermott presented the draft of the district goals for the two thousand twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, as well as the proposed PD calendar. A calendar of after-school meetings was shared, and the proposed structure for the annual administrative retreat was also shared. We also discussed the NJGPA presentation draft, and there was a grant overview, which included the Focus Grant, as well as MOSA and the High Impact Tutoring Grant.
Well done.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Another excellent update.
None. Okay, we're going to go to Finance and Operations, and that's Mrs. Fitzgerald.
I just have like five pages to read.
No, kidding, just kidding. Okay, so the Finance and Operations Committee has met twice since our last meeting, once on May thirteenth, once on May twenty eighth. All attendees were, all committee members were present. What we have been talking about in both meetings, that I think one of the biggest areas that we've been focusing on is our RFP process. And obviously, as a board, we've been really committed to a regular cadence of RFPs for some of our biggest vendors. And so the first meeting, we were talking about our process. The second meeting, we were able to review the RFPs received. Those are for our auditor, our special ed legal counsel, and our general counsel, as well as our architect. You'll see tonight, we are voting in our auditor because we had one person respond to the RFP, and they won. So that is what we will be voting on tonight under that. Everything else, all of the other details are obviously in the minutes for you to review.
Very good.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, we will go to Policy and Governance, and Dr. Giordano.
Thank you, Madam President. It was myself, Ms. Fitzgerald, Ms. Melendez, and Dr. Banjia at the meeting. We reviewed the new board packet that was sent out to all the board members. Dr. Banjia put that in her update, asking all the board members to look at it, give some feedback, some recommendations of the things they think we need to tweak or change out. Also, an update on that chat box that Dr. Banjia created, we've been fooling around with that. But that really is, and there was some confusion, and we're trying to answer that out. That's for board members. The more questions you put in there, so what's loaded up in there is all our school ethics, all case law, the statutes, the codes, and anything you can think of. You just give an example in there, and then it's
Ask it a question.
Ask it a question, like ChatGPT, and it will give you an answer. And the more questions you ask it, the more it will learn the board information. So it's just like a resource for school board members. You know, if it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. If you're not sure, just put it in there, and then contact the board president and say, hey, can we get an opinion from the board attorney? It's really just for us. And so that's something that was on the, on our plan to do for year one, year two, and year three. We just went over, the one thing we have to decide upon, it doesn't have to be done tonight, but certainly the next board meeting, and oh, going back to that chat box, we talked about having Dr. Banjia do a couple demonstrations at our next board meeting, just so board members can see, see what that looks like.
Yeah, you should see it. It's very cool.
We need to come up with board goals, and we need to have a special board meeting in July. Maybe for now, are to come up with some board goals. I'm just saying, we need to do that, because we're just doing the district goals.
We should, should we get the School Board Association to come in, lead that and give us credit on that?
Yes.
If you want. I mean, I don't know if they need to guy us. I mean, listen, if you want to get credit, you want to get credit. But, and again, we could do anything we want. This is not to say we did it right in the past. What we've done in the past, and I shared with the policy committee, was every chair met with their committee or talked with the committee, and they came up with two goals. And usually, those goals align with the district. Like, one goal would be just for the board itself, and one goal would align with the district. Like, to me, one goal we should see as a board is we will support the superintendent and the administration in terms of their job. That should always be board goal. Right? Doesn't mean we always have to agree. Doesn't mean we're going to lay over babbages, not going to ask the hard questions. But we should be supportive, once we get the answers, whether we like them or not. So that's just my opinion. But we can do it any way we want. If you want to get credit for it, school boards, I reach out to them. I know Charlene's retired, so she's a woman.
She's still on till
She's still on till June, so June, right?
No, I think July possibly, depending on when they find a replacement.
If you just want to come in and
I'll reach out to her.
Yeah, it's up to you. But yeah, we need to get a date on the calendar. So for next week, next last board meeting, I know you're not going to be here, Beth, maybe throw us some dates in July that you're, everyone's calendar.
Okay.
Be crazy.
We'll send an email out.
No, I'm not. Now I'm done. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to Boards Subcommittee and Parent Teacher Association Liaison Reports. Do we have anyone from the public for?
Hi, Amy. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for my continuous long reports, but here we go. I am Amy Marini. I'm one of the co-leaders for CPAG, so Special Education Parent Advisory Group, here in Mount Olive. So, as I always say, we are a New Jersey code-driven, parent-led group that collaborates with the district on systemic concerns regarding students with special educational needs. It was interesting to finally be able to look back at Dr. Banjia's special ed audit review, and see that there actually are pretty much a little over a thousand students that relate, that receive either IEPs or 504s and related services in Mount Olive, which is staggering number. So we last met on May thirteenth via Zoom. This was a parent-only meeting, and we were honored to have Lily Caparosa from the COIL Law Group come and speak to us about rights and protections to students with disabilities. We had a really great conversation about multiple different topics, from due process to communication with the districts, to how, you know, we can help the teams write SMART goals, like capital S, M-A-R-T, not actually SMART. And, like, also discussions about, like, IEPs without related services provided. So we really, we'd had a really great conversation. We also, obviously, always remind parents of different things going on within the district. That one in particular was Dr. Banjia's Superintendent Spotlight. And we also remind everybody about ESY dates, times, and locations. And so, ESY, I want to say it's July first. I don't remember when it ends, but it's early August. Preschool is eight thirty to eleven thirty at Tince Elementary, up until, like, the rising fifth graders is eight thirty to twelve thirty at Tince, and sixth grade through to twenty-one is nine thirty to one thirty in the middle school. On May fifteenth, I attended CAC, so I know I've said that acronym before, but it's a State Special Advisory Council, and I promise I will send us links. I did not forget. But I will send everybody the links of the previously discussed meetings. There's so many, and I want them to be a little bit organized, not just dropped in a piece of document for you guys. A lot of, multiple statewide departments share different leadership offerings, engagement opportunities. As always, the Office of Special Education provides some of their broadcasts about new trainings that they are offering. One, a couple that were really interesting to me, but I'm not a teacher, were New Teacher Academy and Professional Learning Series opportunities for lots of different disciplines. And they all look like really great opportunities. But I promise I'll send them to you. Another thing that was shared was the Disability Information Hub, which looks like a fantastic resource that I am sharing with CPAG, just because there's just so many different, like, things that are available on their website. Then they had, the council reviewed Indicator Eight, which I'm still learning these indicators, as I sit through the meetings. But Indicator Eight was about parent involvement and facilitation. And it just really was extremely informative, and confirming to me that, as a CPAG leader, that the state also values what it can look like to have a mutual, mutually beneficial relationship with the IEP team, that the relationship between schools and families are centered around student development and learning, and that there's reciprocal, and both, and both can benefit from that wonderful relationship that is developed through trust and respect, and ongoing, that it carries throughout the child's entire time in the school. They also discussed the data and the parent surveys that get sent down, what the data looks like and all that stuff. And then, you know, how there's always room for growth, and how during COVID, there was a lot more response to some of these things, and how they could develop more supplemental surveys to get more detailed questions, especially for people like me that have multiple school districts involved, sending, receiving, who do I, who do I judge? And then, they also, which I was unfortunately, was not able to stay on for, but they did have a main presentation about enhancing preschool practice, collaboration between the National Institute for Early Education Research, and the New Jersey Department of Ed, the Special Ed Office. And our next CPAG meeting is tomorrow night at seven PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board have any questions or comments? No? Oh, thank you, Amy. Anyone else with faculty or parent association reports?
I have one for middle school, just real quick. I do have one for middle school. Just that the PTO, PTA president, obviously at the middle school, Kelly Huff, is retiring her role because she's graduating up to the high school. So on behalf of the board, we all know how much she has done as PTA president for the past three years. I want to say thank you to her, and a huge thank you to the, for the eighth grade dance that they put together, et cetera. It was really awesome and amazing. So thanks to Kelly Huff, if you're watching, and we will miss you.
I just have a quick one from a long-lost MOMAC. If you don't remember what that means, it's Mount Olive Municipal Alliance. We raise state funds to help children with social, emotional, and drugs. So we have two really neat things that happened. We meet every about two or three months. We spent about two hours at Enzo's on Friday, and we put a hundred and fifty MOMAC and MOMAC stickers, and the stickers that say Parents Who Host Lose the Most stickers on all the pizza boxes, just in time for prom, so people understand. The other exciting news we have is, I believe, the nineteenth, we just set a date with the middle school and the high school. There's a gentleman called Stephen Hill, which we had last year. We were able to split the costs with the high schools. He has, if I encourage everybody to look at his site, it's called speaksobriety.com. He was, he was a scholar student that had a quick drug problem, and it went very bad. And he's turned himself around, and now he's out speaking to kids on how to strengthen their needs. So I'm excited to have him back. And he's actually looking to try to get two more programs funded for us for a little later in the year after this one. So that's it. So that's where your, some of your state dollars are going.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board? I say thank you for any assistance with the funding. And with that, we will move on to public comments on action items. This is pertaining to action items only. Agenda items, members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. And the mic is open, so please state your name and address.
Martin Wells-Muller, twenty-five Wickers Avenue, first-time speaker here at the Board of Ed. Actually, this is my last time speaking with actually a child in the district. So I want, first off, I want to say thank you to all you guys who helped educate my kids. Covers all the agenda stuff you've already done. Thank you for that, because I've, you've guys put out three wonderful kids for my family through this district. But let me get into what I'm here about right now. All right, so, you know, as I always review the bill list and stuff's going on, I saw our energy expense this past month. It is absolutely insane. And I want to know, have we done, or can we do another audit to figure out why it's exploded? Now, we have these solar fields at Sandsure and at Tince, which is the other one? Tince. All right. And I would think that they would hopefully offset a lot of our energy usage, if possible. Something's, something's wrong somewhere. You know, because I look at the, the bill list here, all right, and we list with our electricity for May, Moorestown Solar, we spent four thousand dollars on solar. And then we have Consulate New Energy, that's thirty, sixty-three thousand. And then we have the other, what was it, JPCNL, that's another thirty-one thousand? Like, I don't understand, because it's never been this high, this high before. Am I, am I missing something?
We had, we bid our energy rates back in, I think it was January or February, we were, we went out to bid for it. Energy rates are higher, as you know, but the, the solar, we currently are embarking on an energy audit with Ameresco, that they, they have copies of all of our utility bills, because we're looking to possibly maybe do an ESIP in the near future, or something to help with rising energy costs. So we are in the process of looking through that. But I think that's, that's district-wide, those costs, that's not for a particular building.
No, I understand that, I understand that. But it's, we weren't running over a hundred thousand dollars last year for utility expenses. I think back then, our biggest utility expense was the dome, because what it cost to keep the dome up. But like I said, I just feel a lot of money is going somewhere, and it's some, some equation somewhere is off.
And certainly, we recognize that. So if you look at our strategic plan, one of our goal areas is actually examining our energy costs. So as Ms. Schonin pointed out, this is something that we're doing a deep dive. And certainly, it's going to be when we share our district goals at the next board meeting, you know, we're going to go into a little bit as far as how that's going to be a cornerstone of the work we're going to be doing.
Okay. All right. So the next thing I want to talk about is, action item, was it? Eight point three seven, sorry, was abolishment of description of positions. And what I see, we're eliminating three positions from the Transportation Department, which I find a little funny. And the reason why I'm going to mention that to you guys is this. When I was attending the Mount Olive Citizen Advisory thing, which is absolutely amazing with other board members, the woman who addressed us during a meeting from Transportation specifically said to me that the second person in charge of her department, she couldn't run the department without her, and that, that she was the best thing since sliced bread. She praised her, took photo with me, and sent it to her. And now I see that we're eliminating that position, the coordinated dispatcher, and the secretary to Transportation. So all through, all those jobs, is everyone being eliminated?
No.
You know what I mean?
No.
Certainly, using personnel-related matters, all we can say that we're adjusting the department to meet the needs of our growing district as far as size is concerned. So while there's certain positions being abolished, we're evolving them into different positions because our needs are changing.
I don't see anywhere that you're adding positions to change them.
So we are reconfiguring the department as far as responsibilities and how they're allocated. So certainly, that's the direction that our district is taking.
All right. Well, like I said, I just thought it was very interesting. When someone's getting praised to me in January and February, is the best person working at the department, they couldn't do it without them. And now it's, the department, that, that position being totally limited was surprising to see that. And then the last thing, which is not on the agenda, is how great was that lift-up from those kids? That's all I got to say. And I was, I was actually looking to see any of the board members in it, and I was really upset.
We weren't asked.
We weren't asked.
Corrected for next year? All right.
The next one is twenty twenty-seven.
Was Slim Shady, please stand up?
All right. On the agenda, Dr. Giordano for Policy and Governance, is a tick-tock by the board members, apparently.
I think that would have been appropriate to have you guys in there. That's all I'm saying. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the public related to action and agenda items? No? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to the approval of all of our agenda items. I will take a motion to approve action item 7.1, all the way through. To 10 point, oh, no. 11.2?
Second.
Do we, do we have a motion? Ms. Fenton's making the motion and Dr. Giordano has seconded it already because he's so quick. Do we have any comments or discussion from the board with regards to any of the items listed?
I have a comment.
Yep.
Real quick comment. I just want to thank everyone. There was a lot of questions in this agenda. And I just want to thank everybody for their diligence and their communication in resolving this to a fashion that, you know, everybody was comfortable in.
Anyone else? I just want to say, Ms. Cosman, happy retirement. She was my kid's aide over at CMS. And any other comments from the board? No? Okay, we will take a roll call then, Ms. Shoney. I did 10.6.
She did it in the beginning.
10.6 is the amended version. And 8.3, we added the dollar amount. Just for the rec, for the record, Ms. Shoney. Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
No on 10.6, yes to everything else?
Mrs. Aquino?
No to 10.6, but yes to everything else?
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
I'm abstaining for anything that has to do with Christian Humphrey or special ed, yes to everything else.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
That's it? We're good?
I did.
We got everyone? Okay. All right, with that, we will move on all the way to, back to public comment. And we are with students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. And the mic is open, just state your name and your address for the record.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Brienne Deletto, One Renault Drive.
Will you say that again? I'm sorry.
Brienne Deletto.
Thank you.
One Renault Drive. Okay, so, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to respectfully bring forward some systematic concerns in the district's special education practices and that I believe required board-level attention and possible corrective action. I come with the statement with respect not to sign individual blame, but to bring attention to the broader systematic issues affecting special education compliance, procedural integrity, and student safety within this district. Over the course of my child's time within the district, I've witnessed repeated breakdowns that go beyond isolated incidences. These include delays in evaluations, individual teacher observations, inconsistent incorporation of parent input in IEPs, failure to issue prior notices as required by law, and unilateral decisions made without full collaboration. Most recently, there have been, there has been unjustified delays in reconvening IEPs in 504 meetings. This is not just with my family. Even when specific concerns, data, or follow-up discussions were explicitly requested. These delays hinder timely intervention and violate both the letter and spirit of parental participation under IDEA. Worse, still, families are often bent not, not with collaboration, but with due process filings or warnings and tactics that intimidate those unfamiliar with their rights or unsure of how to advocate effectively. This undermines trust and discourages genuine partnership, especially for families already navigating complex challenges. In addition to procedural failures, I must raise serious concerns about how the district addresses bullying involving students with disabilities. Our child has been involved in eight HIB investigations with five confirmed findings as a victim. Often involved within some same, same peer groups. This regarding elementary and a middle school. When students experience this level of repeated documented harm, it reflects not only peer behavior but systematic failures within the district. And when the student has a disability, the legal implications expand significantly under IDEA, Section 504, and the New Jersey Bullying Bill of Rights. I urge the board to examine whether the district is viewing HIB data longitudinally, track and repeat victims and perpetrators, especially where students with IEPs are involved. Without systematic analysis, vulnerable students continue to face harm while opportunities for targeted interventions are continuously missed. In the spirit of collaboration, I recommend an independent compliance audit, a parent staff advisory committee, a targeted staff training on IDEA safeguards throughout all levels within teachers, administration, overall, and improved HIB data tracking tied to special education status if possible. I am submitting a full written version of my remarks for the public record. And thank you for your time and commitment for doing all, doing what's right for not only my child but for all students within the district. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
And do we have any other comments from the public? The mic?
Good evening, Tony Stralaci, Nowood Road, Flanners.
I heard a belated happy birthday is due.
I'm sorry?
A belated happy birthday. A belated happy birthday.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Happy birthday.
Your birthday was last week.
Happy birthday.
I don't celebrate anymore. Uh, listen, I came tonight because I have three areas of concern I want to discuss with you. You, I haven't been to a meeting, so if you have spoken about it, I apologize to the answer my recent, my redundancy. First thing I would like to ask is, may I have an update on the scoreboard? Is, is there an update on the scoreboard? Has anything been done about the scoreboard?
There is conversation with, with options about. No decisions have been made, Mr. Stralaci.
Can we have someone who we are paying a stipend to operate the scoreboard and instruct people how to use the scoreboard and things like that?
No.
Not at the moment.
That's, that's sad. Four years ago, we told the taxpayers of Mount Olive, we're going to spend a half million dollars for a scoreboard. And it would be an income-producing asset for us so that we could use it for programs or repairs or what have you. And we, and you're still doing nothing about it. And I had suggested you speak to Sparta, they're very successful with it. I suggested you talk to an ad agency and you, you should not sit on this any longer. I mean, this is a, a good income-producing thing.
Tony, we're not sitting, we are trying. It's just been a little more difficult, but I assure you, I agree with you.
Something has to be done about that.
Well, let him finish and then any comments will be at the end.
All right. These are my concerns, that, you know, I, I've been, I don't know how long time and I want to see these things done. My second concern is, I came to you a couple of months ago and expressed my concern about we're hiring a supervisor for custodians. I was told that we are reorganizing to save money. Well, when you keep adding levels of supervisors onto that department, you're not saving any money. And now I understand the person who we hired, who was highly qualified and recommended, is now gone. And now what are we going to do? Bring the consultant back again and pay that person money? I would remind you that for many, many years, we had a director of buildings and grounds. Everyone knows, every summer, they fight to get classrooms ready to start January, uh, uh, school again in September. Well, we did that and renovated Tents Road School at the same time. Another year, we did that and moved the whole board office. And we didn't have all these supervisors. We had foremen's and we had a director of buildings and grounds. And I think you are going right now, not organized, disorganized. And I would take a good look at that. I just don't, I just don't know what's happening. The third thing I'd like to ask you about is what's happening with the referendum? Nothing? Well, I would say to you that I'm becoming very, very concerned and very worried because if you don't get something going by this fall, we have a problem by 2027. And then you have to look at the overall picture. Our next bond's coming matured in 2029 from the high school. And now you're going to have to do is put that, we, we left a footprint on one of the wings to put another thing up there because you're going to have to do that too. You are going to be in a lot of trouble. We're spending money, a few million dollars on trailers or modules, whatever you want to call them. They may even be put into a place where you're going to have to put classrooms on. That's another problem. You cannot wait, my friends. You have to get doing this now because even when you pass a referendum, it takes two years before you're going to be able to occupy it. Now, we put a referendum out last time, we failed. I'll tell you why we failed. We made, we just convoluted the whole referendum. We put too much into it. We put stuff in there that should not have been in there, it should have been for classrooms, classrooms only. And the people said that. They said, why are we paying, putting, paying for this thing now? Why haven't you been doing that over the years? Well, we have, but they just didn't realize it. When you go to a referendum again, and you should by this fall, without a doubt, you have to do it strictly for the classrooms. About 21, 22 million dollars is what it's going to take if you do what we were going to do last time. But you have to do that, and what you have to do is this. We have 5,000 students. If you took one parent for each student, you will not get the paltry return that you got last time for yes votes. You will get more. That's the people who you have to speak to. When you go to a referendum, every school should have an assembly at night where you bring those parents in and you talk to them. And that's where you'll get your votes. You're not going to get them from the town. People are, are struggling, they're just that and everything, they're not going to vote for it. You have to go to the people who are going to use it. And I'm telling you, in 2027, the schools are at capacity now. We can't, we don't have room to park the cars for the teachers. You're going to need these classrooms. And you're going to be out of compliance because the state says you need X amount of square foot for every, for every student in every classroom. You cannot put 35 kids in a classroom. It's too much. Where are you going to put these kids? Going to rent space? You're going to keep, buy more trailers and using stop cash money? You can't. You must go to a referendum this fall. And when you do it, only do it for the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stralaci, I have a couple answers for you. So from the May 28th Finance Committee.
Yeah, yeah, so in relation to the scoreboard, in our May 28th meeting, what we did is reviewed, is from Neptune Music and Game Time Revenue Opportunities, it's the advertising for the scoreboard. So we've been reviewing the proposals to see all the different revenue generating opportunities there. So we just reviewed it in our last meeting. So it is underway. We are absolutely on the right path with that.
It could, listen, if, if, when it's going to hold true, what they said they were going to do, and you make $200,000 or $300,000 a year, look what you can do with that money.
Yep.
It's scholarship money, or you can do it for programs, or you could do it for a roof.
And I think I'd, I'd.
It's there for the taking.
I am going to interject here because this board has worked diligently this year to come up with a strategic plan. I, can I ask, were you able to review that? Did you review our strategic plan?
I'm sorry?
Did you review our strategic plan that was released last month?
I'm sorry, I'm really having a hard time.
Our strategic plan, were you able to review it? Strategic, did? Our strategic plan? So if you, that was released last month, it outlines as far as the goals that we have and our objectives, which includes revenue, recruit, it includes long-range planning, right? And certainly, what I will say about the last referendum, certainly there's things as a district that were not addressed that needed to be included on that time. We learned our lessons and we're moving forward. But I want to make it clear that this board is highly qualified to lead this district, to navigate the growing needs of this, of this community. And I have a full faith in their leadership in order to ensure not only are we addressing our immediate needs, but the needs coming in the future. And I highly encourage you to look at strategic plan in which we involve many stakeholders, which addresses all questions that you had talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Stralaci.
Martin Wells Muller, 25 Wickers Avenue, Bud Lake, New Jersey. Furthering what Tony was just talking about, I was actually talking to someone from the planning board today. Mount Olive Township has only 57 acres left in the township that's developed. If the school district doesn't act soon to try and get some of that land, it will be gone. We're going to be forced to add over 300 affordable houses in Mount Olive. That means every complex that they build, 20% is put aside for affordable housing. So in order to get to 3,000, or 300 affordable homes, how many homes have to be built? 3,000. So we're going to have a massive problem coming down the road. Unless you're going to use eminent domain to take over land adjacent to the, the high school area, you guys need to start thinking about that land before the state mandates, due to their affordable house mandate, that we won't have the land to build on anything in the future for Mount Olive. And this is only a conversation I actually had earlier this morning. And what Tony's talking about, I've said before, we're eventually going to have to build another school. Even though some people think we don't have to build another school, our district is still growing. You know, we, everyone wants to live in Mount Olive. We have a great township, we have a great school district, and we put out great students, thanks to all you guys on the board and the teachers and stuff. But like I said, this is a situation that you probably are going to eventually have to somehow talk to the township and see how many acres they can put aside, or the district figure out working how to acquire for some future planning for our district. Because once the land's gone, the land's gone. You know, with the Highlands Act and some, some of the pervasation societies that we have to deal with, that we may not be able to get the opportunity for the last 57 acres unless we get eminent domain on some of the small farms that aren't being used. I just don't want to do what they're doing down in Cherry Hill, whatever they're doing down in Cranberry. But that's, that's kind of my concern. And as you see, like, speaking of Cranberry, they're trying to take someone's farm, a 175-acre farm for affordable housing. So that's going to be hitting us here too because of Phil Murphy's failed policies on trying to force people to, at the housing. And that's all I have to say. And lastly is to say thank you all for the job that you do for our township. I know it's not easy being in those seats all the time. Definitely not easy when I'm here. But like I said, our district wouldn't be what it is if it wasn't for all of you. Fight with me, agree with me, disagree with me, doesn't matter. But like I said, at the end of the day, you're the volunteers up there doing this for us. So I say thank you as the last student of mine leaves the district, but I will, I'll be here still. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The mic is open. Okay, we will move on. Bold business, members of the board may comment on any topic or item that was previously discussed. Anyone? No, all right, and we're going to move along to new business, anyone?
Also, no.
Okay. And we're going to move on to board comment, and I will start over there, Dr. Giordano.
No comment.
And Mrs. Fitzgerald.
Same, ditto.
And Mrs. Aquino.
No comment.
Ms. Fenton?
No comment.
I have no comment. Mr. Orzillo?
No comment.
And Ms. Figuera?
No comment, aside from happy end of school year to all of our staff.
Mrs. O'Neil has a comment.
I wanted to say congratulations to all the scholarship winners, all the kids that won awards at the senior awards. We have great kids graduating this year, really done great things. It's good to listen to all they have done. Congratulations to all the retirees and to more for their winning. And I absolutely loved the Best Buddies Unified Presentation whoever put it together, absolutely adored that.
And do we have anything over there, Dr. Bangia?
I think I said enough tonight.
And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting, watch the weather for next week, everyone. We do have rain dates on the calendar, so be prepared.
And it looks like it's going to ruin everything.
We are prepared for rain dates.
And tomorrow.
For your mouth, God's ears, that's all we have.
All right, and with that, motion to adjourn?
Summate second.
All in favor?
Board members, board members.